I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our January 21st, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Sarah Hashi of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform. Before we begin, I ask that our members introduce themselves.
I'm Beth Cassavant.
Teresa Flynn.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlin.
Kevin Misicar, Town Manager.
Stephen Madouse, Town Council.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
And John Samia, Chair. First item on the agenda under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval. Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item is to review and act to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2025, which was our last meeting.
So moved. Second.
Have been moved in second, did all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, announcements, reports, colleagues.
Mr. Chair, I have an announcement. It is time for residents of the community to return our town census. Residents will receive a street listing census form in the mail to complete and return to the town clerk's office either by mail or by dropping it in the black town bills and correspondence box outside of Town Hall at 100 Maple Ave. If you have any questions or need assistance, please contact the town clerk's office at (508) 841-8507, or email them at clerk@shrewsburyma.gov. I just wanted to note why it's important to return the census, so we actually have an agenda item later in our meeting that applies to the town census. But it is used to assist public safety and emergency responders, apply for grants, assist the town and state in calculating state and federal aid, project future school enrollment and school registration outreach, to update the voter list, to serve as proof of residency, and all residents, not just voters, should return the form each year. And as we're going to discuss later in this evening, it also impacts the number of town meeting members that represent your precinct. So it's important for every household to return the census, so I encourage everyone to do that.
Thank you, any other reports? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Town Manager's Report. Town Manager's Report, Mr. Misicar.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to update the board and anyone who may have heard me announced last week. We had originally been notified by the State Fire Marshal's Office that we were not going to be eligible for a $25,000 equipment grant due to not being compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. After some advocacy by Senator Moore and Representative Kane, we have received rescission of that decision, and we will be eligible for that grant at this time. So I did want to provide that point of clarification. So we are eligible and will receive that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Misicar. Next item on the agenda is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31. It's an opportunity for citizens to provide public comments during our meetings on matters within our board's authority. We have three members from the public today that will be presenting during this portion of the meeting. I'd like to introduce or invite the first individual, Brian Costello, up to provide. If you could, Mr. Costello, if you could state your first and last name, your address, and any affiliation for the record.
Brian Costello, 398 Walnut Street, the chairperson for vote no for Shrewsbury.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the time to discuss the special election this evening. I want to first thank Chairman Samia and Mrs. Cassavant for taking the time to speak with myself and Mr. Richards last week at the Select Board office hours. I felt that we had a very productive conversation, and I appreciate the time spent. We won't agree on everything, but we can have a respectful discussion and debate on every issue, and I thank you. My appeal tonight is to common sense. With such an incredibly complex issue, I don't think any of us actually want to spend our leisure time talking about guidelines, zoning, and regulations. So I just want to speak to some simple facts. At this moment, according to Governor Healy, there are no towns that are noncompliant with the MBT Act. There are towns that passed as-of-right zones based on the now unenforceable old guidelines, and there are towns that are prudently waited for the SJC ruling. Actually, as Mr. Misicar just mentioned, many towns have received a letter from Governor Healy stating that they are not uncompliant because there are no guidelines right now. She has stated that there will be enforcement when there are new guidelines. The ruling gave us a lot of understanding about the law. It's constitutional, but the meat of the law, the guidelines, need to work their way through a regulatory process that includes a public comment period. I and many others that have been involved with this issue across the Commonwealth, we see this as a fortuitous opportunity, actually. I've personally spoken to other citizens from towns that didn't pass zones, and we don't see this as a threat. We see this as an opportunity to work with the state to create a more tailored guidelines that aren't one-size-fits-all. No one, not even this board, really wanted one-size-fits-all guidelines. So now we work together. This is a great opportunity for citizens, town officials, and I think Mr. Misicar even mentioned, our legislative representatives, to take what's become a hot-button issue and possibly create reasonable zoning guidelines. But we have a looming election on the zone that was built around guidelines that are currently no longer relevant. We have a zone when we don't need a zone until at least July of this year. We have an as-of-right zone that pragmatism says, wait. Wait until we know more, wait until we have the guidelines, wait because once we zone it, they will come. Already, towns that have created preemptive MBTA zones have seen developers starting to swoop in. What if we could work together to create something more tailored to the needs and desires of Shrewsbury and its residents? I think it's worth the effort, as many of others do in this town, as well as other municipalities impacted by this law. I'm asking tonight that the Select Board urge a no vote on the upcoming election, or move to the election to May, when we know more about what the new guidelines will look like. Guidelines that we hope people in this room, including those that have been opposed to the law, will come together and work with the HLC for a better outcome for all of us. We're under no threat right now. We're under no zoning requirements, and the governor, as I mentioned, stated that FY25 grants aren't currently at risk. Common sense says wait. Common sense says the game has changed, and a zone for the sake of a zone puts us at more risk for zealous and opportunistic development than being prudent in either saying no or making a smart decision to wait a little longer. Thank you.
To invite Greg Richards up next. If you could, Mr. Richards, just state your name, first, last name, and address, and any affiliation for the record, please.
Sure. Greg Richards, 16 Hickory Drive, here representing myself.
Thank you.
So those supporting a yes vote have referred to us as political activists. As often occurs in politics today, one side will accuse their opponent of doing what they are in fact doing, to create confusion and attempt to distract voters from evidence of their own guilt. Proponents of the yes side, including this board, are pushing Shrewsbury to approve the action of town meeting, which was adoption of amendments to our zoning bylaw based on what the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has deemed ineffective and unenforceable guidelines. Instead of respecting the court's decision, our governor and Attorney General turned to political activism and created emergency provisions to push a political agenda. The Secretary of the Commonwealth, who is responsible for the regulatory process, states emergency regulations are meant for real emergencies. They aren't meant to avoid public hearings or public comment periods for non-emergency situations. Not only is this not an emergency, the EOHLC, who is responsible for creating the regulations, bypassed the process announcing unapproved regulations without prior submission to the Secretary of State. Even if one believes there is an actual housing crisis in Massachusetts that justifies an emergency, Mass. General Law 483A was enacted in January of 2021, and no emergency was declared at that time. If it was not an emergency then, what has changed to make it an emergency now? Our position on the no side is simple. We acknowledge that Shrewsbury needs to create and adopt a compliant zone based on the SJC ruling, but our compliance needs to be based on effective and enforceable regulations that have gone through the proper state-mandated Administrative Procedures Act. The APA requires a public comment period where all voices can be heard, fiscal impact studies to determine the financial burden this legislation will put on the 177 affected communities, and a small business impact studies to determine how this legislation may impact the businesses that employ 45% of all Massachusetts workers. Members of this board will probably state you feel confident that the guidelines won't change after this process is followed. However, if the APA process is followed as intended, in an open and inclusive manner, the existing guidelines will change. We have until July 14th, 2025, to comply with the "emergency regulations." Until that time, we remain in compliance. We are not at risk of losing any previously awarded grants and can apply for all future grants. No community is being denied grants for not being in compliance at this time. We'll have multiple opportunities to review and adopt a compliant zone based on updated regulations. We have a planned special town meeting in April. We have our annual town meeting in May, and if the APA process is properly followed, we will likely have until fall town meeting to create and submit a compliant zone. I am asking the Select Board to hold the state accountable. Throughout this process, the Select Board is focused on compliance in fear of losing grant eligibility. Grants are now off the table. There is no harm in waiting. Move February 4th election to May, or recommend residents vote no. It's time to put the residents first. Thank you.
Thank you. And invite Tony Bonaventura up as well. Good evening, if you could introduce yourself, first, last name, address, and any affiliation. Thank you.
Good evening, Tony Bonaventura, 120 Howave. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like to discuss a key point regarding our current MBTA zone plan. As a reminder, at our November 2024 town meeting, our Town Council confirmed that once Shrewsbury's current MBTA zoning plan is ratified, a developer can immediately file applications for an as-of-right development in that zoning area as long as their plans adhere to the zoning. We will be stuck with the large development of that builder if that occurs. If we ratify the current zoning and zoning regulations, which are more advantageous to Shrewsbury, are created through the upcoming state hearing and review process, we can change zoning, but it will be too late to stop applications that have already been submitted by developers. And we know from recent experience in our town, the developers are prepared to act immediately. Due to the recent SJC ruling and considering the uncertain information town members had back in November, I would respectfully ask you to consider this question. If the current zoning plan is ratified, developers may immediately submit plans, exposing us to the risk of a large development under our pending MBTA zoning plan. Looking forward, new regulations may be implemented with zoning more favorable to our town. Understanding the current options, should we proceed without rescinding? I would respectfully say no. I hope you can see the benefits and advise the town to vote no and rescind the current zoning until the appropriate time. In my opinion, given the current change of events, there is no downside risk in the board advising for a no vote. Because of the recent SJC ruling, we are free to rescind the current zoning plan, and there is upside opportunity in creating a zoning plan in the future that complies with the yet-to-be-created zoning guidelines from the state, which may be more advantageous to Shrewsbury. Thank you. Thanks for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening and providing your comments. Just as a reminder, if residents would like to provide public feedback before a meeting, please notify the Chair the day before the meeting, and look forward to having you present as well at future meetings. So thanks again for coming on this cold January night. Next item on the agenda under new business and to review and discuss the Supreme Judicial Court decision of Attorney General versus Town of Milton dated January 8th, 2025. I'll turn it over to Town Council, Stephen Madouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Select Board. So as you're aware, this is the decision of the Supreme Judicial Court that was much talked about, both at our special town meeting, and has gotten a lot of press coverage throughout the Commonwealth due to its importance, and certainly here in Shrewsbury. So it's the Attorney General versus the Town of Milton, and it was issued on January 8th. In February of '24, the residents of Milton voted down proposed zoning amendments to satisfy the requirements of Chapter 40A, Section 3A, the MBTA Communities Act. They voted that down at a referendum similar to the referendum we have scheduled for February. The Attorney General then filed suit against the Town of Milton to enforce the MBTA Communities Act. The Attorney General sought declaratory and injunctive relief to enforce compliance, and there was a question as to whether the Attorney General had that authority to bring such an action, and whether enforcement was limited to, if you recall, the MBTA Communities Act. The second section concerns a prohibition on getting grant funding if you're not in compliance. So the town in this action before the SJC asserted that Section 3A, the MBTA Communities Act, was unconstitutional as a delegation of legislative authority by the legislature to the state agency, and that the Attorney General lacked authority to bring the enforcement action. And the court held, as was mentioned earlier by one of the residents, that 3A was in fact constitutional, that it was not an impermissible delegation of the legislature's policymaking authority, but rather a requirement that the state agency implement that policy. The court also found that the Attorney General has broad authority to enforce matters in the public interest, and that enforcement of 3A was in fact in the public interest due to the housing crisis. The court also concluded that the penalties provided for in the Act in that second section do not preclude equitable relief that the AG is authorized to pursue under her broad authority. So the Act, enforcement of the Act, is not limited to the loss of grant funding, but you could suffer an action to compel compliance. Finally, the court ruled that the guidelines adopted by Housing and Livable Communities are ineffective because the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities failed to comply with the requirements of the Administrative Procedures Act, which is Chapter 30A of the General Laws, which is a procedural act for how state agencies must enact regulations. And despite the language in Section 3A, the court found that the guidelines were in fact effectively regulations, and therefore Housing and Livable Communities must comply with the procedural requirements of the Administrative Procedures Act. So the Housing and Livable Communities must adopt the regulations pursuant to the Procedures Act and cannot enforce the guidelines until they are so enacted. And subsequent to the ruling, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities submitted emergency regulations at 760 CMR 72, which are almost verbatim of the guidelines that were promulgated previously, and that all the other communities in our community adhered to in preparing the zoning that was before the special town meeting. So I have a red line of the emergency regulations. My understanding is that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will be pursuing the regular enactment, if you will, of regulations under the Administrative Procedures Act. The emergency regulations are valid for 90 days, three months, and so the expectation is that the regularly enacted regulations will be enacted following the 90-day window. But it was interesting to see the minimal changes. Of course, the most significant change from the guidelines to the regulations, as was noted by one of the speakers, is the time deadline for compliance is now July 14th of 2025. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Madouse. Colleagues, questions?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Madouse, would you be able to just expand a little bit on what happens in the 90-day window?
Sure. So the court held that the guidelines should have been enacted as regulations under Section 3 of the Administrative Procedures Act, which requires notice to the Secretary of the Commonwealth and a 21-day publication of, before any action is, before the regulations are enacted, and allowing for public comment, public input, but it's not a hearing. But public input must be available, made available. The regs must be available for inspection, for review, and the agency must prepare a small business impact statement. There are certain minimal requirements as to what's required to describe the potential impact of the regulations on small businesses. And I struggle to see what that would be relative to these zoning requirements.
So there's no public hearing?
No. It would, well, it's a public process, but Section 2 of the Administrative Procedures Act, if the regulations are to adjudicate rights, requires a public hearing, but the court, the SJC, said that these regulations should be adopted under Section 3, which does not require public hearing. It requires an opportunity for public input, which may be written, and the agency itself could decide to have an oral public, you know, could hold a hearing-like process, but it's not required.
Thank you. It's up right now.
Yeah, and part of their argument during SJC was that they did that, right? It was the de minimis issue that they didn't go to the Secretary of State, but that they went through the process of getting public input?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure the manager recalls that, our planner probably recalls it. There were a lot of meetings with the Executive Office on the proposed guidelines at the time, but the court rejected that as not complying with the Procedures Act, Administrative Procedures Act.
Teresa, go ahead.
So in reading all of the information that's available on those, can you explain to me this February 13th deadline? It says, "Communities that did not meet prior deadlines must submit a new action plan to the state outlining their plan to achieve compliance by February 13th." So I'm unclear on, does that apply to us? Does that not apply to us?
We complied with the action plan for the prior deadline, so we're okay on that. Our action plan was approved under the prior deadline, so that's only applicable if you didn't have a prior approval.
Okay, so even though we didn't implement it, we still have met this deadline?
Yeah, the action plan is the first preliminary step, and then the second would be the adoption of the zone change.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Madouse, would you, I know you said it was nearly verbatim, the new regulations that they submitted, could you explain what some of the differences were?
Sure.
From the original ones?
Yep. So, of course, most of it is stylistic because they reference CMRs instead of the guidelines, the sections. They use defined terms more actively than were in the guidelines, but none of those are substantive. They cite their authority, they cite the, this is the new language, they cite the authority to adopt regulations, and they cite the Supreme Judicial Court decision in Attorney General v. Milton. They added to the, they also reference a MBTA community categories and requirements, which was a chart or table that was available in the guidelines that's now incorporated into these regs. They added to the definition of a subway station, it originally read the green line, blue, green line, red line, orange line, blue line, and then now including but not limited to the Matapan High Speed Line, which I think is the Milton line that was in controversy that they had omitted. So now it's clear.
Is that so, I'm sorry, so you're saying that they clarified that that is now considered a subway station?
Yes.
Okay.
So Milton was claiming they weren't a rapid transit community because their antique line shouldn't qualify. Well, now it's clear in the regs. And then the only other substantive change in all these pages was the deadlines for compliance adding, you know, the original deadline for compliance for communities relative to the action plan under the guidelines was January 31st of '23, which we complied with. If you were a community that did not, you now have until February 13th of 2025. And similarly, the deadline prior to the SJC decision under the guidelines for Shrewsbury as an adjacent community was December 31st, 2024. So we were not in compliance. Well, actually, we're somewhat in limbo because town meeting approved it, but it's not effective because of the referendum election, so we're probably not in compliance until the SJC decision came out saying the guidelines with that deadline are not effective. The regulations will make it July 14th of 2025. Those are the substantive changes in their entirety. Otherwise, they read as the guidelines read.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Mr. Madouse, you can decline to answer this, if you will, but if you'd like. This speculation that, you know, between now and this process that we'll go through to generate these regulations, that something could materially change, how should we view that? Is there any indication that there's, I mean, to me, the state is very much signaling that this is what is going to be put into effect, but tell me a little bit more from a legal perspective why we should not expect otherwise.
Yeah, I don't know how much of it's legal or practical as well, because I've been aware of the efforts of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to draft the guidelines in all their outreach and all the meetings that were held. So the likely, and then all these other communities, I don't know how many MBTA communities there are, but so many of them are now in compliance, having relied on those guidelines. I think that greatly diminishes the likelihood that there'll be substantive changes from what we've seen, what we saw and relied on as the guidelines, because all these other towns have adopted their compliant zoning. And so for the agency now to change those rules, I think, would create havoc. But that's just my speculation, you know? And then also relying on the red line of the emergency regs versus the guidelines, there's not a lot there.
No question?
There's 177 communities that must comply with MBTA communities, and there's, I believe, currently 30 that have not yet complied, and then I think there's even a smaller number that are in the situation we're in, right?
Gloucester.
Gloucester, Needham, just finished, and Shrewsbury. But the other, if you're saying there's 30 that have not, and three are doing referendums, the other 27, with the exception of, I think, Holden, who's doing nothing, they're working to come, you know, to come into compliance. And I, you know, our neighbors in Westboro, Grafton, Northboro, are all in compliance. That's in the back of my mind, right, is that, you know, 177 minus 30, those are a lot of communities that would be affected by significant changes. And I do recall when this first came out back in 2021, or I think it was 2021, you know, there was a robust process by which communities could provide feedback, and I know that the original act doesn't really look like the act we have now. It's changed significantly over that time, even though it's been like a moving target the whole time, but there were significant changes based on feedback from communities and their concerns regarding how this would impact. concerns regarding how this would impact them and their own situation. It just makes me skeptical that there's actually going to be meaningful change through this 90-day period. I almost think it's a check-the-box exercise, we need to do this, and yes, there might be comment that comes through, but I'm not confident that that's actually going to make a substantial difference in the guidelines.
May I, Mr. Chair? I think tagging on to that, it's, based on, you know, the best information that we have available to us at this time, I know that there's comments and requests to delay the vote, but my concern is that if we delay, and then we don't have a compliant zone, then we're not going to have necessarily the time to have something that would be compliant by the July deadline. We would have to, we would have to go through the whole process, rezone, town meeting approval, et cetera. And so, what's, you know, there's a lot of risk to us if we're not in compliance.
So, my understanding under election law, though, the warrant's been posted, the ballots have been printed, you, you cannot cancel an election or reschedule an election. Once you've, once you've gone through those two steps, it must be held.
That's good information. And people have voted, so that doesn't surprise me, you know, with absentee, people have cast ballots.
Yeah. Election is governed by state law, right? Once we, you know, you, you can schedule it, but once it's scheduled, it's governed by laws of the Commonwealth, so.
So, February 4th is happening regardless of, it is out of our control. And I do, I mean, I respect that we have people in the room tonight, and again, I know we have a public comment process, and I just want to make clear that it's, you know, we are here to listen when it's public comment, and I just, you know, the discussion comes after when it's an agenda item. But, I did hear loud and, you know, hear that, could we move it? No.
No, we had a good discussion during office hours as well.
We did, yep.
Which appreciated the opportunity to go through and have a good back and forth. The, a couple of things, a lot of the definitions and the like are grounded in the statute, not the regulations, emergency regulations, guidelines, formerly known as guidelines. Minimum gross density is defined in 3A, as are a lot of the definitions in the, or most, I guess, except for determination of compliance. Those are then copied over to the regulations themselves. Those aren't going to change by statute, and as the way the SJC said, they're not a policymaking body, they're determining compliance, which has been found to be lawful. I don't see them changing based on the determination to promulgate regulations that are in the same form as the guidelines. And a statement as well, the expectation from the EOHLC, they'll be the final regulations as well. And the other thing is town meeting, when town meeting took this up, there was less clarity, and what we had expected to happen did happen with 3A. More clarity around the AG's enforcement authority, which was the question we were looking at, whether or not it was limited to grants, or the AG had authority to enforce, which has been made clear by the SJC. So, the way I see this is that when town meeting, and there was a lot of debate, and there was a, an amendment on the floor, and it passed, and now we have more clarity in front of us through this decision. So, I think it's consistent, the information that's come out from the SJC is consistent with the assumptions that were made during town meeting. I don't think that's changed. I think it's more solid.
I mean, what you're saying kind of makes me think to, you know, what's the substance of the ballot? It's whether or not to uphold the vote of town meeting, right? I think that's kind of where we have to look and say, okay, this is, yes, it's all about, do you want to comply, 3A, grants, development, all of it, but at the end of the day, and it's simple, it's form, it's do we want to uphold the vote of town meeting? And just one other thing I want to note, you know, we were asked in the public comment period, you know, to, you know, urge the town to vote no. It is not in the purview of this board to be urging yes or no. We, you know, we took a vote, and we said where we stood on it, but there are two ballot committees, and, you know, there is that division between public, public resources, public boards, which is what we are, and then a campaign, which is what we're not, so.
Teresa, go ahead.
I, I do, you know, think to just add on to that, that it is important to call out that, you know, this is a law, and as was noted, it is constitutional, it is enforceable, it's, you know, when it was challenged, we believed it would be deemed constitution and enforce, constitutional and enforceable, and we recognized that there was merit that the regulations weren't promulgated correctly, but we did expect that the state would try to, would remedy that, you know, fairly quickly. So, I agree, like, everything that we, you know, use to inform our decisions and our recommendations has been proven through this SJC decision. And I know, I've also looked at the yes pages and the no pages and the FAQs, and, you know, I, I really do come to this with the mindset that everyone is trying to do what they think is right and what they think is best for Shrewsbury, but clearly that, you know, there are disparate interpretations and, and opinions. And I think that, you know, where, where I sit here, the state's approach to this was really unique. It wasn't, it was like, here's a law, you can tell us how you're going to comply with the law, and people are like, oh, well, that's a choice to comply or not. And, you know, there are consequences to noncompliance, and I, I think that they're severe, and they're not in residents' best interests. And I think we've spent a lot of time talking about what this impact is going to be to Shrewsbury, and the fact that we are subject to 40B. You know, you brought up the Milton case, well, we should be like Milton. Milton said no. Well, the state sued Milton, and Milton lost. And you brought up Needham, and, you know, Needham went through a referendum similar to, to what we're going through, but I think they had to, their minimum requirement was like 17, 1800 units. Town meeting voted for over 3,000. It was like double what the state required. And residents are not saying no to compliance, they're saying no to over compliance. And the residents in Needham that I've spoken to expect to be in compliance, and expect that this will go back to town meeting, and they will have a lower compliant plan, and that they don't expect it would be fought. And people can check my prediction later to see if, if that plays out. You know, but a long-winded way of saying that, you know, looking at the agenda and the residents that were going to come forward, I know it's super frustrating. I know it's frustrating that, you know, the state, this is state overreach, and they shouldn't be dictating zoning, and, you know, if I were voting on MBTA zoning, if I were voting on whether or not to allow this development in Shrewsbury, I would also be a no. And then you can say, well, how can you support compliance? And I think therein lies the rub. It's, you know, I just don't think it's in residents' best interest to not just lose grant funding, but now we know that the state will take other action, whether they sue us, but honestly, I think they're just going to come in and tell us, this is what we're doing. And I think that would be far more disadvantageous to, to Shrewsbury. So, not to unpack our whole zoning plan, but I do think that, you know, we had to own for 1,500, and that's the narrative in the community, but there's, I forget the numbers, I'll have to look them up. There's over, like, 600 that are existing, 500 that are being proposed under 40B. You know, net new would be around 400. Mr. Town Manager, if you could, let me know if I'm wrong, but, you know, we are different from other communities that aren't subject to 40B, that truly are getting net new development. So, you know, overall, I think that, you know, the harm of noncompliance is far more significant to residents, and I, that is what is first and foremost in my mind, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think that's what we, we are doing. This is not because the town wants it, but when we look at the upside versus the downside, the risk versus the reward, saying no doesn't generate any positive outcome. And I think that, you know, to say no to compliance and to know that we would be then subject to litigation and penalties for residents, you know, that would be using residents as pawns just to make a statement. And I, in good conscience, you know, just, I don't agree with that, so. Thank you for allowing me to say that, but I think, I know there's a lot of attention on that, I know that a lot of residents are looking to us. How, why would you agree to compliance? And I think it's important that people recognize that it is a law, and we're complying with the law. And there are a lot of laws that I don't agree with, but when you say no, there are consequences, and I think that those, those consequences are much too severe. And I don't think it'll change the outcome.
Any other comment?
I just, you know, echo what Ms. Flynn said, you know, it's, at the end of the day, I don't think it will change the outcome. We'll end up with 33 Green Street that I believe is already permitted, is that correct? Is 33 Green Street already permitted?
Approved by the ZBI.
Approved by the ZBI, and 409 South Street, we have the developer of 409 South Street in here, and he, they did commit to not increasing the number of units if the MBTA zone passed at that location. So, we'll end up with the same number of apartments built in the community in these zones, and just less funding from the state, and the cost of litigation when we get sued by the state. And that, that is not in the best interest of our community, so.
There was an interview with one of the Milton Select Board members or former Select Board members, and asked a question, and they spent $300,000 to litigate it, and ended up back where they started, and that's one of the consequences we need to look at as part of this process when we talked about affirming town meeting. I mean, not every regulation we sit here and go, yea, state. I mean, that's the problem. The question is compliance, and what's the risk of noncompliance, and what's the consequence of noncompliance? And that's really the, all the factors that I believe town meeting considered, embedded in all the process through the public hearings before then, and I don't think those assumptions changed. With the facts that were given, that wouldn't change the decision, if anything, probably bolster some of the uncertain, and I understand the philosophical differences too. But, this is ultimately looking at the compulsory powers that the AG will have, and the expectation that the guidelines now regulations, the emergency regulations are now in effect, and they are the same thing, and will be the same at the end of the day. So, it's the best plan forward under the circumstance for minimal compliance, but at the same time to make sure that we're compliant. And we've gone through the process, hence that's why we're where we are today, instead of May, because the process has gone through until town meeting on November 18th and vetted, and that's what we're looking at now. And that's what the referendum is, is whether or not to affirm what town meeting did, it's narrow. But, it, all the debate was behind that, before that, in discussion, so.
A question from Mr., excuse me, from Mr. Mizikar. Do you happen to know when voters should expect the voter guide in the mail?
Do we have a mail out date, Justin?
Yep, the voter guide will be mailed out this Friday, the 24th.
Great. There's no action required, right? So, this was just a discussion and an update, and being subject to open meeting, this is pretty much the only way we can do it. Hence, okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Madouse. And thank you again for the public comment. Next item on the agenda under new business is to review an act to certify the number of town meeting members per precinct pursuant to Article 1 of the general bylaws based on the 2024 town census. Mr. Dobson, I'm going to hand that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Samia, just pulling up the presentation materials now.
So, if you want, I can provide a brief overview, and then I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, this is a review and act to certify the number of town meeting members per precinct pursuant to Article 1 of the general bylaws based on the 2024 town census. This item requires us to reallocate the number of town meeting members to precincts based on the number of residents in each precinct, and that information was previously provided by the town clerk.
Correct.
I'll hand it back over to you.
All right, thank you. So, just wanted to begin with an overview of the reallocation process for board members that have been on the board for, for a few years. You'll recall that you voted on reallocation in 2021 and in 2022, so might be thinking, why is this back before us so soon? So, just wanted to provide that context for board members and for, for members of the public. There are two processes identified in the town's bylaw related to the reallocation of town meeting members. There's Article 1, Section 2 of the bylaws, which require that, beginning in 1960, every four years, a town clerk shall certify the number of residents per precinct according to the town census. So, as Select Board Member Conlon alluded to, very important that you complete that out, complete that town census form out, because it impacts your, your representation here at the local level. And that process was last done by the Select Board in 2021, so four years ago, and tonight's vote is related to this process. And there's a second process required by the Representative Town Meeting Act that was adopted, so Chapter 53, 553, Acts of 1953, Section 4, which requires that every five years, the boundaries of precincts shall be reviewed, and if needed, revised. This is historically done after the federal census, and this was last done by the Select Board in 2022, when those census results were certified and received by the town clerk. Sorry? So, this slide breaks down the calculation of how the town meeting members were reallocated per precinct, and this is outlined in Article 1, Section 3, which provides a specific formula for how that breakdown occurs. In summary, the town clerk certifies the total population, which is found here at 32,161 residents. You take that total number, and you divide it by 240 town meeting members, and that results in 134, by rounding it to the nearest number. And then you take the precinct population, and you divide it by 134, resulting in that number of town meeting members per bylaw formula column. And the bylaw stipulates that you need to allocate to the nearest whole number. So, again, to highlight the importance of filling out the, the town census form, you'll see precinct 1 had 26.57, and then precinct 10 had 22.58. That .01 difference resulted in precinct 10 getting one additional town meeting member, and then precinct 1 being rounded down to the, the next nearest whole number. So, again, a small number of difference there, but an important, important in their representation. And so, this next slide is a breakdown of, based on that calculation in the previous slide, the number of town meeting members that would be allocated, allocated to each precinct. So, I think the most important column for board members and the members of the public to focus on is that change column. You'll see precinct 1 gains 2, precinct 2 remains level, and then going down, you'll see precincts gaining and losing town meeting members. So, the request of the board tonight is to sign a letter to the town clerk certifying that we've gone through the, the process required by the bylaw, done the calculation, and a copy of this spreadsheet on this slide would be provided to the town clerk, and we would be requesting the town clerk to update the 2025 ballot to reflect the changes in town meeting members. So, instead of there being 8 for precinct 1, there would be 10, and then so on and so forth, reflecting those changes by precinct. Happy to answer, any questions that board members have?
So, in terms of action, it's certifying the number, and then, okay, and then we all sign it, got it?
Correct.
Any questions or comments? I know it's mechanical.
I'm just glad we're not redrawing the precinct lines, that was tough. Yeah.
Soon enough. There'll be soon the redrawing, but.
I know, but it's not tonight.
All right, go ahead, Teresa.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dobson, thank you.
Yes.
Maybe just to confirm what is likely obvious, but this does not impact anyone who's currently a town meeting member. It will only impact upcoming elections, so there are a number of people that will be up for reelection, so they just need to recognize in their precinct, there may be more or, you know, fewer opportunities for, for reelection.
That is correct.
That is correct.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, please.
How will this be communicated to, beyond this, to town meeting members and to the community at large?
Yep. So in speaking with the town clerk, once we've certified these results back to her, it is her intention within the next week to issue nomination papers. And those nomination papers would specify the number of town meeting members that would be eligible for election in this upcoming year. So again, instead of it saying eight, as residents in that precinct might come to have expect based on the current results, that those papers would be updated to say that there are 10 eligible seats for, for nomination.
And we'll also share this whole packet with town meeting members through their, the email listserv that we have with them. So each individual will get notified. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
Can we, Mr. Mizikar, just make an effort to let the general public know, just so that they know in their precinct, the number of, of town meeting representatives is either increasing or decreasing as well?
We'll include this in the upcoming newsletter as that gets mailed out to everyone.
That'd be good. Thank you.
I think, thank you. I think it would be important to note, too, that these numbers are reflective of responses to the town census and stressing that that's why it's so important to fill that out and send it in.
Anything else? If not, is there a motion?
That is on me.
Yep.
Is there a motion to certify?
Yes. I move that we certify the number of town meeting members per precinct as calculated in Mr. Dobson's spreadsheet.
Second.
I've been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers to polling places pursuant to the Votes Act for the 2025 election. This requires us to designate the police chief the authority to assign a sufficient number of police officers at every polling place to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws related to elections. As you know, this is an annually recurring item and is a requirement associated with the election process after the signing of the Votes Act in 2022, which amended Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 72. And we have a letter to this, to us from both Town Clerk Sharon Thomas and the Chief of Kevin Anderson, what is stating and shall detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling place for one or more precincts at every election. And for all 2025 elections, we recommend to sign one police officer per location except for the Spring Street and Calvin Coolidge Schools, which should have two police officers assigned. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to review an act on the request from Kavitha Mimalda Mahamidala, excuse me, on the issuance of a proclamation for the Health for Humanity Yogathon organized by Hindu Swamisavik Singh, USA, January 18th to February 2nd, 2025. Colleagues, this is a recurring request, has been happening since 2019, similar form to the previous years as well. Any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And last, to review an act in the streetlight request from a member of the BSA Troop 7114 for a streetlight along Old Mill Road between Maple Avenue and Bunker Hill Road. I would like to just call out Mr. Dobson for his incredible work with this. The first, this was a young local resident originally bringing this forward with not all the details. And Mr. Dobson worked collaboratively with this young individual to bring this forward for our recommendation here to, or to request to Selco to study this. And thank you for your work on that. You get, you get the email and your first inclination is, what's your name? What's your address? Where's that? But you really worked through and explained the process. And thanks for doing that and your patience and education. And it's great to have a young person involved and wanting to better our community. So that's great. So if there aren't any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
The motion has to be that we refer this request to Selco for their review and recommendation for them then to recommend and then to send it back to us. So that would be the motion.
Second.
I've been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously to go to Selco to come back to us. And part of that is to give information about expected costs going forward in our budget. That's probably the, but I get it.
I know. I just gotta make fun of it every once in a while.
It makes you miss dog hearings, right?
Yeah.
Okay, now we're in correspondence. Email dated January 4th, 2025 from Stephanie Gargay, MD, PhD, 23, Appaloosa Drive, regarding plea to stop the Emerald Run development, 3369 Green Street Project in Shrewsbury, Mass. We provided a response to her regarding the status of this project, so noted, so thank you. Email dated January 6th, 2025 from Bonnie Savageho, 146 South Quin Sigmond Avenue, regarding using traffic cameras and automated, automatic enforcement in Shrewsbury. The chief responded to that, so noted, so thank you, Chief Anderson. Next item, 13, letter dated January 8th, 2025 from Louis Rodriguez, PE, Federal Emergency Management Agency, regarding flood insurance study report and flood insurance rate map, so noted. And the last item is an email dated January 15th, 2025 from Jennifer Mallett, 39 Farrowan Circle, regarding complaint. And I know that Mr. Baldinger has been working at that and responding as, working with our vendor as well as responding to the resident, so noted. So that is all we have on the agenda this evening. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And then moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us. We will see you on January 28th. Good night.